Unless anybody has an objection, we can reconvene.
Yeah. So just... I'm sorry, go ahead. Your Tom is here, Gordon is here, and Troy is here. So the full board is here.
Just to start off, if anybody's participating out there in the audience, this is a working meeting, so my intention is to not entertain any questions or commentary from outside the group so as to be able to get through this process and get ready for town meeting. So having said that, we can get started on this pre-town meeting meeting. Today, September, I think it's the 4th, right?
3rd.
2020. And I guess there isn't much of an agenda other than to go through the topics. Do you want to start with the special first or save the special to last, Charlie?
The first thing really should be to tackle about logistics, just to review the situation. We are meeting at the elementary school on Saturday, September 12th at 9:00 a.m. The town meetings are exempt from the governor's directives on gatherings, so we can have more than 25 people in a room. However, we're going to, we need to still follow the normal COVID protocols. And given that and trying, let's say, to keep seats, let's say, seven feet apart, we're going to need both rooms of the gym and the multipurpose room. The overflow is going to be in the multipurpose room. The... So, you know, I'll have to coordinate with Barbara about having staff there to check people off and then to direct people to the multipurpose room to be checked off there. And we'll still have the normal quorum of 100. Dennis and Larry, just in terms of the ideas of doing the room, you know, we've been working with East-West presentations. They did a similar setup for the Plymouth, Plymouth Town Meeting, which met in two rooms. So we're going to have screens and cameras and microphones and such, so that the folks in room, in the multipurpose room can see what's happening in the, in the gym. The folks in the gym can see what's happening in the multipurpose room. And Dennis, you're probably working with Barbara, need to sort of designate an assistant town moderator for
Yep.
the multipurpose room, just to coordinate things over on that side.
Yeah.
The... What I'm, in term, and in terms of the setup for the seating and everything, as I said, we're going to try and keep the seats, let's say, seven feet apart, because the moment someone gets up and walks, they're going to be probably less than six feet, and we're trying to maintain that distance. But I think that we should encourage, if people are from some, are the same household, we're not going, you know, they can, innocents group their chairs together right there, but it doesn't mean we put more people in the room. It means there's a bigger space around that clump of pot of people from the household. I don't want to get into arguments with people about whether they can sit together or not. We're trying to get a town meeting. We're trying to get that moving along. And if, you know, two members of a household want to sit together, fine, but all they're going to do is move one seat over to another seat. We're not going to put another seat in and raise the number. Having talked to the staff of the school and trying to work out the logistics of the seating, my guess is, including the stage, we'll be able to do about 100 people in the gym, which would be the quorum. And then, you know, as long as 100 of those people are resident registered voters, and then everybody else be over in the multipurpose room. We do need to reserve seats, obviously, up on stage for you, for Larry, for Barbara. We need reserved seating for the finance committee and the board of selectmen. And we need to figure out where we're putting the non-registered voters who, you know, normally we have what I call the strangers' gallery. They're over there in the corner. Probably something similar for the multipurpose room, but you may need one or more people who are not residents in the gym in order just to coordinate the meeting better. Can talk, you know, if necessary, I can talk to you individually, Dennis and Larry, about anything like that. The assumption also is we're all wearing masks. We'll have microphones set up for people to go speak to, and we'll try and coordinate someone to wipe down the microphones and things as people come up and such. In terms of voting, I do have a suggestion. Obviously, voice votes don't work when you've got two rooms. And I think most people have gotten tired of, let's see how loud we can be. And what I'm going to suggest is that I order from WB Mason some card stock in red and green. Green being a yes vote, red being a no vote. Give those cards to each person as they come in. And Dennis, so when you're asking for what would normally be a voice vote on something, you can just ask everybody to raise the appropriate card. You'll be able to see whether there's a, easily a majority of green or red. You'll have a screen for yourself, be able to see the multipurpose room, and you can see if there's a similar division there. If it's close, then what you can do is have your counters go out and do the counts of the cards. But we won't have a yelling match. It will, should be about as easy to determine if it's a very lopsided vote, whether it's a yes vote or a no vote. Would that system work for you?
My challenge will be, and I, and this is going to sound lame, you would be surprised at how limited my vision is. And I want to anticipate that if there's, and I've said that, I've made it clear to people, they understand, and we've had people who have assisted me in those parts. I, I would, I don't know how awkward it would be, because as moderator, you know, there's a neutrality that's assumed. What would be the option of having someone who would be able to cite that, who would not be accused of being biased in any way? Because I'm just anticipating some questions from, from the audience if it's a controversial issue, and, and I'm the one making the decision on red, green. So I'm wondering if there's another way to do. I, I think the card stock makes sense to me for a lot of reasons, but the, the visual scanning between even the two rooms is going to be a challenge for me.
Well, I think...
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Charlie. I'm sorry.
You have a just town moderator over in the multipurpose room who can look
Right.
along with the screen that you should be seeing. And if you, you know, if you needed a second assistant town moderator, I don't have anybody in particular in mind, but if you need a second assistant town moderator in the gym to assist you with looking at that, then it can be, we can have that done. And as I said, if, you know, I, I don't know how, how the limit is for you, but
Yeah.
if it, if the, if the count's in question, not the count, but if the...
Color. The color.
Easily discernible whether there's a majority of green or a majority of red, then
Yeah.
you can still always go, you, you've got your option B, which is, okay, fine, counters, please go out there.
Yeah, I just, I just kind of, knowing how challenging it is all going to be, I'd want to anticipate some of these issues ahead of time. So, for example, I think we would agree that if we could get everybody to do this without having to go through counts because of the, how long it takes to do that, that would be ideal. And by the way, I'm visually challenged. It doesn't, I am not colorblind. I can see color. That's not an issue. It's really just an issue of how far outside of my vision. It'll be interesting to see the first time it comes up. If I see a sea of red or a sea of green, I'm not going to have a problem with that. But I just, I kind of want to, if I could have an assistant town moderator in the other room, that would be great. And then someone, whether it's another assistant town moderator in the larger gym, that would be ideal. And, and have people that won't be questioned as far as their neutrality.
Yeah. Um, so, okay, so there's that piece. In terms also of moving the meeting along, I know that I had emailed both you and Larry months ago about what I was calling a consent agenda. It may not be workable for articles where there's an interest in passing the articles, because there may always be a situation where there's, somebody says, well, I want to talk about this, even if it's something as minor as the article that, for the passage of the revolving funds, which, as far as I know, there's never been any real debate about in years.
Yeah.
I can come up, you know, I can, I can go back through the warrant, look at it, talk to you and Larry about it at a later date, and see if there's a, you know, consent agenda for articles to say yes to. But on the other side, I'm fairly sure there'll be a bunch of articles where we're going to, the recommendation from the finance committee and even from the department is going to be to pass over. And that we can, even if it's only five or 10 articles, that we'll be able to take, you know, I, we've seen this in other town meetings, not here in Halifax, but other places, where there's a consent agenda to pass over articles. And then, you know, we list the articles, we say, you know, Article X, Article Z, Article AA, whatever, and say, you know, move to pass over the whole list here, and we get those out of the way. The, my idea here simply is that we're, you know, we want to move the meeting along, obviously, giving, given every, still giving everybody an opportunity to ask questions, debate the motion, whatever it is. But if, even if an article takes only a minute to do, it's sort of, sort of like pitch count, you know, the pitching changes and pitch counts in baseball, if you can eliminate some of it, then it can shorten the time that we're all going to be together and move, and effectively move the meeting along.
Can we, Charlie, can, can we handle that as, as we handle the budget, as in reading, saying to people, here's the budget, do you have any holds on any of these lines as we're going through? Can, is it, can it be done, kind of similar to that? Let's say we have 10 articles that, that there's a general consensus that we want to pass over. We say, we're grouping these together. If anybody has some issues with them, we can place a hold on them and then vote how many ever our people are comfortable with. Is that a possibility?
Larry?
Yeah, I think effectively we can do that.
Okay. So, so after this, I'll, let me write something up. I'll get it to...
Right, yeah, the idea, Charlie, I think, is for you to put together a group or a listing of those that you think would want to, you know, put on the consent agenda. And, you know, as Dennis indicates, if anybody has an issue or wants to place a hold or discuss anyone in particular, we can pull it out.
Right.
So, yeah, so you put up a dozen, and they're comfortable voting half or 10 of them or whatever, then you only have the two to, to, to deal with.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. We have two other concerns before, well, I mean, sorry, go ahead. There are, there are, I need to work with Barbara, probably on logistics and such, and I'll do that offline. How we want to get everything set up for people walking in, and we'll have hand sanitizer. I talked to Scott Maturna also about that. But there are two extremes for the town meeting. One, we don't have a quorum, right? You know, in this, for whatever reason, we don't get enough, the 100 people that we need. If that's the case, we'll need to figure out, you know, a date to when we think we're going to adjourn to, and we can work on that during the next couple of days. The board had very specifically said they wanted to keep the quorum at 100 people. That's fine. They could if they wanted to lower the quorum temporarily, but they have to give notice of that. I think it's at least a week before, you know, they have to vote on it, but they have to give notice that they're voting on to do that, at least a week in advance. So if we were running into a problem with a quorum, the board can reconsider that for a future meeting. The other end of the spectrum is the, we're going to, if we do run out of room, let's say, figure, hypothetically, there's 100 people in the gym, there's 50 people in the multipurpose room, and that's our limit. We get 160. Just like with the problems we've had with some meetings, regular meetings, where we have too many people in the room, we're running into a situation that we may need to close the meeting. We're going to make a decision to say, okay, we can't continue or even start, for that matter, and adjourn the meeting to another date. And in another place in that case, because what we've determined is obviously there are more people who want to be at that meeting than we have room here. The Kingston Collection, the mall, you know, Independence Mall over in Kingston, has their K, old K-1 track that they have said that we could use for a town meeting. That would be a big enough space to, I'm sure, house any number of people. Board of Selectmen had looked at that as a possibility and at that time declined, you know, said, we'll stay here, you know, for logistical reasons for both the townspeople and the town officials. But if we run into a situation that we can't hold that number of people, that's our next, that's a plan B there. The thing is, of course, I need to give them some notice as to when we would move the meeting to. And it would be helpful in terms of talking with you right now or in the next couple of days to pick a date ahead of time, so that if at 9:15, Dennis, we've say, okay, we've reached capacity, people still want to be here, we need to adjourn the meeting, here's the new date, here's the new place. I don't know what your schedule is and what Larry's schedule is or anybody else's schedule is, for that matter, to be able to do that. And whether the preference would be for Saturday morning or another, or go back to the old weeknight at 7:30?
I mean, logistically, is, is there, is there an advantage or a disadvantage to staying with Saturdays? I mean, is there a, the Saturday at one point was thought, in case, we were thinking about maybe an outdoor thing, but, you know, again, and I hate to say this, because you never know what, what life will bring, but I've kind of left September open. So if the 12th doesn't work out, it's, it's strange how we talk about the possibility of too many people coming, because I hate the optics of having to close down a town meeting because there are too many people who want to go, you know? I just, there's something wrong. People might misunderstand that. So it certainly wouldn't be ideal. Certainly, we've, we've dealt with under quorum for a long time, and that happens. And people, you know, I don't know if they'll expect that, but they'll understand the reason for having to reconvene if we don't have enough people after a certain amount of time. I, I have a sense that that's not going to be our problem. I, I don't know, but I'll be surprised if we are under the, the 100. It's, it's, for some reason, I'm having a sense that we will likely be over, and that will be the issue, you know? So I'm... God, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Charlie, I was wondering if it'd be possible to recess it until the following Monday, which would be the 14th, so that we could possibly still meet our goal for tax rate?
The Kingston Collection needs...
For setting the tax rate?
Now, if we have to close because we've got too many people, I, Kingston Collection needs a week's notice, which is one of the reasons, you know, so I can, you know, I can, I think, if you give me half a minute, I'm, I believe I have an email in the selectmen's file right now with the possible dates that they're open. So if you give me half a minute, I'm going to find it. And so that, for instance, if the board told me today, and Dennis told me today, Charlie, reserve the Kingston Collection as a possibility for the 14th, then, you know, I can do that. Just give me a minute.
Sandy, while you're there, if we had to get the bills out a little later, do we have the cash flow to sustain us?
I, I believe we have the cash flow. I, I'm just not sure. I know that Holly's been working very hard to make it so that we can have those bills out October 1st. And we're on a very tight timeline, even with having it Saturday, to get, to do the hearing and to have all the paperwork done for the recap, and then get the bills printed and stuck in the envelopes and in the mail.
And...
Because we have to get them in the mail so that the people have them in hand by October 1st.
And it has to be certified first.
Right.
So, so, yeah, I, I'm just throwing it out there. If we had to run late and for whatever reason, if we could...
I'm not sure what, yeah, I'm not sure what the, the laws are as far as that, because that's, that's Holly's thing. But I know that we've been working, we're on a very tight schedule to get them out so they'd be in hand on October 1st.
Really hate to have to send out a preliminary bill and then a corrective bill.
Absolutely. That's why I was hoping for the 14th. If we had to.
Right. Well, should we not get a quorum on the 12th? We have the option of reducing the quorum for a one-time deal.
But you have to do that at least a week in advance. So if you guys think that there's a possibility that we won't get a quorum, you should make that vote ahead of time.
Yeah, but I, I, I agree with the optic of that. I, I would rather have tried and failed and then change it than, at least my opinion.
So the question there is, is to Sandy's point, if we were not able to get a quorum on the Saturday, we reconvened to the 14th, that's not giving people a week's notice of reducing a quorum, though?
Correct.
Yeah.
No, but then people can get on the phone and say, get to the town meeting. We've done, we've had to do that.
Right, if you fail, you, right, you, you just...
Wasn't there a town meeting vote to have the quorum at 100? How can we change that?
I think Charlie had a, a way of doing that. We can ask him when he comes back.
So what the directive from the governor's office is that boards of selectmen with sufficient notice can reduce the quorums. So for, and for instance, 100, you can reduce it to 75 or 50 or some, whatever number you need to. It does require public notice that you have that vote, and the notice, I believe, has to be at least a week in advance.
This, this may be dancing around things, and I'll, I'll certainly always bow to Larry, but can such a vote be a bit of a conditional one, given the time constraint here? Can it be said that the selectmen voted if a quorum isn't reached on Saturday, the 12th, and, and the town meeting has to reconvene, that the, the board of selectmen would vote to lower the quorum to 50 in order to conduct town meeting? And can that be done, or is that a little bit of a...
Stress?
Unreasonable, you know what I'm saying? I don't know if I'm explaining that right, but...
They voted in anticipation of, is what you're saying.
I mean, the hope is, you get, you get a quorum, that's the hope. But if you don't, can it be voted ahead of time that there's a condition, if you don't meet it on that date and town meeting has to reconvene, then the quorum would be reduced in order to make sure we can conduct town meeting. Certainly to add to the timing issues here, but it just, again, it may feel a little artificial, and I don't want people to, to think there's manipulation going on, rather we're just trying to plan as well as you can under less than ideal circumstances.
What you perhaps could do if it, if it passes muster is, we can do something prior to that that says if we don't reach quorum by 10 o'clock, for instance, the board of selectmen could choose to lower the quorum count so as to be able to conduct business. I don't know if that would fly or not, but...
So you're suggesting during that time, without reconvening, you're basically saying, if it doesn't reach it by 10, then drop it down. And, and again, that kind of strikes me as an odd thing, too, and I'm not sure how well received that would be. I was really thinking more, can you vote conditionally if you don't get it on the 12th and you have to reconvene on the 14th? Can you, ahead of time, tell people it'll be down to 50 for that particular meeting? But, again, we may be doing a little bit dancing too fast, and, yeah.
This is Larry speaking, chiming in. I, I don't have a problem with conditional vote. It's just a question of meeting the logistics of it, the timing elements of it in advance, public notice, the vote, that sort of thing. We're running a little bit short of time.
Right, you're talking the third right now, so by the 12th, you're, you're basically, you've got nine days. So you, you're just over your week. So you'd almost have to vote today if you're going to do a conditional vote.
Yeah, you have to publish notice of the vote seven days in advance.
Yeah.
Is what we're driving at.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, seven days in advance of the actual vote?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood, too.
Yep, yep, gotcha. So you'd have to vote by the 10th in order to have it be effective. And then, then the question is, is that not, that's not really sufficient notice, is it, to the, to the townspeople? They might not feel that way anyway, you know?
Yeah, I think that if we don't get quorum the first day, which I think we probably will get quorum the first day, because people tend to sit in the meeting and call all their friends and say, come, come down, we need quorum to, to do the town meeting. So we've always been able to have that first day of town meeting. I don't remember one first day that we didn't, weren't able to handle.
Yeah.
I'm more concerned with if we go over the limit and we have to move the meeting to the Kingston Collection. I'd like to do it as soon as possible. That's why I'd like to see Charlie do it on the 14th.
Right. So, I mean, and I think the unfortunate part of that is, as much as we're moving to accommodate more people to participate, you are moving it out of town. And, and that's not, that's likely going to affect those people who wanted to come. So you're not going to get all of them who come. You might end up, and, and then you may end up with the opposite issue when you reconvene on the 14th of not having the quorum.
Sure.
Tom?
Yeah?
Can we, because parking is probably going to be an issue, can we close the fields for that day?
Um, I, I mean, depending on what's school property and what's our property.
Well, the board has jurisdiction over the fields when the school's not in session. And I, and I, that includes Saturdays and Sundays. But you have, I, you know, we've had town meetings before without needing people to park on the fields. If people, you know, we've got the school lots, we've got the library lot or cops lot, we've got the town hall lot. Um, I don't...
My intention of that was also to have those people come to the meeting instead of going to soccer and softball games and baseball.
Oh, I mean, close as in activities that day.
That's a good thought. Yeah.
Of course, if it's a nice day, the hops field will fill up pretty quick with cars, too, so.
Yep.
Well...
I think Sandy's point, we're not going to have a problem with the, with the, probably the quorum, but we might have a problem with the overcapacity.
So Dennis, I, I did find the email, the dates that are not available, which coincidentally are not, you know, we couldn't go over there on the 12th, obviously. Next week, at the following weekend, the weekend of the 18th to the 20th is a no-no. So it looks like their weekdays are in much better shape than their weekends. So if the board wanted me to, I could contact the Kingston Collection and say, can we get a booking for the 14th? Now, they may want, they may say, you know, you need to, whether, if you're booking it, you're going to pay one way or the other. You know, in essence, you're reserving the room. And, but it's minor. I think it's like $500 or $600. And when we're looking at East-West, for instance, and spending several thousand dollars on communicating between the two rooms, that's not a material cost. So if the board wants, just as, you know, we'll have a plan B in place to, if we get more people than we can accommodate, that the meeting, that I reserve the Kingston Collection, and we already have plan B. Dennis knows it, you all know it, that if we hit whatever the capacity is, that there's a motion to adjourn the town meeting to make to Monday, September 14th at, let's call it 7:00, at the Kingston Collection.
Yeah, I, I think that's a reasonable plan. And, and I'll be surprised, to be honest with you. I mean, if you've ever been over the mall lately on a Monday, before even the pandemic, it's vacant, it's empty. So it's, it's a ghost town. I've been up there pretty recently. So it'd be nice to think they'll allow us to reserve it, and if we don't use it, not have anything but a nominal charge. I'd like to think that. But I... Um, but I think that's a, a smart thing to do. And again, it's up to the selectmen, but I, I would, I would be recommending that as a reasonable preventative discussion or move.
Well, I would move it to the 14th. But I'm, I'm thinking more like 6:30 or 7:00.
Tom? Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm thinking on a, if that's a, the 14th again is, is a, is a weekday?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, then if, if we make it too early, then you're going to get complaints that I didn't get home in time from work and, you know, blah, blah, blah.
You, yeah. And you get people saying that when you have it in Halifax. And if, if you're going to have them go over to Kingston, I think it'll be a bigger issue. Yeah. I, I think you're, I think you're probably better to leave it what's the standard in the evening, which is closer to 7:30, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. I, 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 yeah, I would keep it there if I were you.
I, I think that makes the most sense to me.
So I needed a vote from the board to authorize me to contact the Kingston collection to reserve the room for Monday, September 14th, 7:30, with the understanding that if it is not used, the town will still be liable for whatever deposit.
Yeah, that's only fair. I'm moved. Can I get a second? Gordon? I'll, I'll, I'll second it. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Millius? Yes. Mr. Andrews? He must have dropped out, but, uh, two votes will carry it.
Okay, I will do that. Um, I apologize for talking about logistics for what, what closing, well, more than a half an hour, but, um, as much as the warrant itself is important, um, I, I, whatever we were doing, wherever we were doing it, um, we needed to get those things out of the way because we, it's easier getting answers to questions about the warrant than doing the prep work for the logistics. So, um, Dennis, did you, are we set with the logistics for now? I'm sure I need to work with you, Dennis, Larry and Barbara on some of the physical setup. I'll have to bring in Scott Materna, but I can do that, um, at another time. Um, is there, are there any other logistical questions with the meeting at this point?
No, I'm comfortable at this point. And I'll be happy to talk further about it with you, uh, Charlie and, and Barbara and others.
Sorry, I, I dropped, my laptop died and I had to plug it in.
So Gordon, what the board did was vote to help me reserve the Kingston collection for 7:30 on Monday, September 14th, in case we hit the capacity on Saturday. That would give us a fallback position to move the meeting along. Um, and, um, just, you know, get, um, and they need a certain amount of time to reserve the space. And there's, you know, and I said, we may, we may need to put a deposit down in essence, and we may lose that deposit, but, um, if we don't have to do that, but since I need to reserve the room in advance, then we're going to do that.
Okay. Do we have any other costs to set up audio or visual there, or do they provide all that?
They provide the, as far as I know, they provide the lot. I mean, they, the room is 500. I think internet connection is 100. I'll confirm with them, but we won't need the setup that we need with, um, at least the, the complicated setup that we have with East West. I will check. I assume that they, I have to believe they have a P A system there, but I'll find out. If they don't, then I'll have to go in and figure out what we're doing for a P A system.
Okay.
I mean, the, the, um, I believe the Kingston town meeting held it there. Um, there's been a changeover in administration there just in the last week. Um, but I'm sure I can, you know, if there, uh, between co- contacting Kingston collection and contacting the town itself, I probably can find out what they ended up doing.
Okay.
Okay. So unless there are logistical issues, um, if Dennis, if you wanted to move to the warrant?
Yeah.
Do you want me to lead this, or do you want to, or?
I don't know. If you would, and, and the reason is I have both of the warrants up, but I, for some reason, wasn't able to print them out, which is what has been my ideal. So if you wouldn't mind going through them, that would be helpful. Um, and, and unless there's anything incredibly complicated, I would probably just do the special to get it done and then move to the, to the regular, which seems pretty, um, significant, other than maybe a lot of articles to pass over. So why don't we start, if you would, Charlie, with the special and let's, let's get that kind of resolved. That doesn't look as long here, I see.
Yeah, we have two specials. One is, was a one article special that we put on for the roof project. That was done way back in the spring with the idea that if we actually had a town meeting in the spring and money was approved, we would get the roof project moved along before the start of fiscal year. Um, both of those meetings are scheduled right now, being the one article special and the, you know, the annual at the same time. My recommendation, and, you know, Larry can work with you, Dennis, about the actual legal mechanics would be to, um, we, we somehow clo- you know, open and close the special, re- and just get it and not do anything with it. The one article special simply because the same article is on the annual town meeting warrant. And so we're going to deal with the roof project no matter what. Um, I think it'll be less confusing because at 9:30, we're supposed to move to that short, I think it's a five article special town meeting. Um, you know, sort of normally as we would have done on a normal year, we'll get, we'll get to 8 o'clock, the equivalent of 8 o'clock, in this case, 9:30 and handle the special. Um, Larry, is any advice on how do we might just sort of skip the special or just do a one-minute special and say, well, I guess we could just get to the special immediately and vote to pass over the one article and then go right back into the annual?
Yeah, I don't, I think that's an option. I also think Dennis has the prerogative to, um, um, skip it all together until the annual is completed.
Okay.
I, I, you know, I mean, I think it's his option, his prerogative. We've customarily done it one way, but if he wants to make a bold statement at the outset, saying this is how we're going to proceed today, then I think that's within his, um, purview.
This is probably a bit pedestrian, but honestly, given all of the upheaval and the uncertainty, if we can keep things as people are used to having them, unless there's a reason to do it differently, I would just assume stay with what, let's, for lack of a better way to say it, tradition. I think there are just too many things that have moved and people are uncomfortable enough. Um, so if, if there are two specials, as I'm hearing it, one with one article that, did I, did I get the impression that that's looking to be passed over, or am I misunderstanding that?
Well, the one article is to fund repairs to the roof at the County Attorney Center. It's on the, we'll tell meeting warrant, it's on the special town meeting warrant. We don't have to do it twice. And it's the article there. So either we could, then for that one article, as Larry said, as a possibility, would be just wait until the annual town meeting is concluded and say, and do the special and it's in and out in one minute. Or you could do it right in the beginning. And say, we're going to deal with this article at the annual move, or do I hear a motion to pass over Article One of the special town meeting? None? Good. But we're going right back to the annual.
And it's, and then it's handled in the annual?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I, I, that's fine. I don't, I, I, if, if people can be assured that it's going to be handled and they'll have an opportunity to, to talk about it, then I think I'm fine with doing it at the beginning rather than waiting for it to be at the end.
Okay. I'll work with you and Larry about getting that set up. So we just have a script and we, we get that done.
Sure. Thank you.
Special, we have five articles. The first one is for, um, some H D A C work here at Town Hall, I believe. Sandy, the quote's about 6,000 and we'll, and we'll have a source of money available for that. Um, the second one is the 30,000 for the unemployment compensation. Again, similarly, the third is, we may be able to pass over Article Three, which is 30,000 for the council on aging ban. We're looking at the possibility of getting CARES Act money, um, from Plymouth County to fund that. Um, I'm hoping that by the 12th, we'll know whether it's an eligible expense or not and be able to pass over the article or actually have a debate about it. Um, the fourth one is 20,000 for additional money for truck enforcement. This is a result of a petition article that's on the annual that talked about doing truck traffic enforcement and having, the board talked with the petitioner and basically I, my understanding is the petitioner is going to want that passed over. I'm not going to say do that. I, we, we may get to that article and pass over, but there's the more general issue of traffic control in Halifax and whether the residents want more time spent on that. And this would allocate additional money to the police department for that particular purpose. Um, I think the board felt that it was necessary to put it on there to give the townspeople an opportunity to make a decision whether or not to spend the additional money. If they did it, that's fine, but at least they've had that option, they've had that discussion, and they can decide what they want to do. Then Article Five is for a crosswalk extension from, between the two loads of Cranberry Drive along Plymouth Street. Um, we applied for a state grant for this. We still have not received word. Maybe by the 12th, we'll have a confirmation one way or the other. So if we got funding from the state, we won't need to do this. Um, if we haven't, it's a petition article. Um, and then, you know, I would expect that the petitioners will, we, you know, want to debate it and we'll see where, um, it goes. We don't specifically have a source for this. It, um, there's only so much free cash available and Sandy can confirm, basically it's been allocated to mostly articles on the annual town meeting so that, but the problem is that we'll be dealing with this article first before those articles are at the annual town meeting. So technically the free cash has not been spent at that point, but, um, so we're going to have to work out procedurally whether we're going to ask for stabilization, which requires a two-thirds vote, or grab the, or in essence, have the free crap cash grabbed then for this article and other articles on the annual, if the town meeting wants to approve them will require stabilization and a two-thirds vote. I didn't know if people had any questions about those five that are on the special.
Has the finance committee made any recommendations on those?
We've made recommendations on, um, all of them except for the ban Article Three because we, we have a hold on that one in case of, um, potential funding through the CARES Act, but we've made our recommendations on one, two, four and five.
Okay.
And that was, they recommended one and two. They did not recommend four and five.
Correct. Yeah. We recommended one and two, and we did not recommend four and five.
What was the sum of money on one?
$7,000.
Okay.
Are people set with the special?
Yeah.
Yep.
Let me get to the annual. Um, Article One, the normal report through town offices and committees. Dennis, I would, you know, I, certainly this is a time for the selectmen or the finance committee or anybody else to make a report. Again, in terms of, as much as, I, you know, I appreciate the ability to do that, we're also going to be interested in moving along. Um, my only hope is that anybody who wants to speak for Article One, keep it brief. Um, again, with the intention that we can get the business of the town meeting done as quickly as possible. Article Two is a series of amendments from the wage and personnel board. The, as many of them are still sort of in contingency mode, um, at least as when we were printing the warrant in June, the wage and personnel has been working, that's Melinda and Gordon C., um, on recommendations. They're going to have an update for the, um, town meeting that I'll try and make available before, you know, certainly before town meeting. Um, some of them are fairly extensive, but, um, and we'll have, you know, they'll have recommendations. I don't know, we'll have, we'll get those to the finance committee. The finance committee has seen this printed version before, but I'm not sure that they've had updated versions on everything that's here. Also, wage and personnel, as part of their work, may bring a, um, amendment for a change in the wage schedule. Not, they're going to be doing that for particular positions, but they may do that for the entire wage and salary schedule. Um, back when we were still looking at this in May and June, the problem was that the state had not made a commitment for local aid in terms of the chapter 70 and the unrestricted local aid. And what our assumption is that we were going to see a significant material cut, that we're going to reduce the opportunities for making any changes, um, either across the board or any particular positions. A few weeks ago, the governor and the legislature made commitments to the cities and towns to level fund local aid from fiscal 20 to fiscal 21. Um, that changed sort of our fiscal dynamic here. And the finance committee's been making changes in their budget, but also wage and personnel is relooking at whether or not to recommend a general wage increase. Um, and they'll be meeting again this week, in fact, later this afternoon. Um, and then I'll report back to everybody. Um, I didn't know if anybody had any particular questions about any of the possible amendments for Article Two. Um, as I said, some of them are fairly extensive.
We have a, a ballpark of what, what adjustments might be, Charlie. I mean, I, I, and this is a, I'm, I'm not sure I'm asking this in the role of moderator, but just in managing a, a meeting of the townspeople, the concerns that might be voiced, might have a lot to do with any kind of increases in the middle of a pandemic, might, might seem a challenge for some to, to, to appreciate, given significant unemployment, given significant furloughing. Um, but is there, is there a, any discussion of what that ballpark might be if there is a, an adjustment that's, um, going to be proposed?
Melinda and Gordon, I'm not speaking for you here. I'm just going to give information from other, um, personnel situations we're dealing with. We have a series of union articles, the union agreements. I know with the firefighters, that the selectmen and the firefighters union have agreed what would end up being the equivalent of a 1.6% increase in the wages for the firefighters. We've not reached agreement with anybody else, um, but I suspect that if the wage and personnel board was going to recommend a general wage increase, it would resemble it. And it's up to the board, to those two people to make that recommendation. And again, I'm not speaking for them, but my suspicion would be if they do recommend something, it will be something like that.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate that.
And I think they're doing that. And I think the finance committee has been, when it's been working on the budget during the last few weeks, understands exactly what you're saying. Um, the unemployment rate in Halifax in July was 16%. And that doesn't include, I, people who are working fewer hours or anything like that. I, I think that they're doing that in, um, with the cognizance of the economic climate for individuals and for families and households here in Halifax. We've always left money on the table for the last number of years. Um, and any increases that would be due, are, from what was printed in the warrant to what the finance committee is recommending ultimately, are due to the changes in the local aid numbers, not property tax. So in essence, whatever the assumption was what was going to be levied, let's say we voted in June, that levy is pretty much the same now. Um, the, any changes or any increases are due to the increases that now we're looking at for local aid. It's not, the votes aren't changing the actual tax bills.
So Charlie, the, the only update that I got from Kathy Lenatra on Monday was that the legislature is not going to pass a budget until after the election in November. So the promises that they made to level fund, um, I believe had a condition that they thought they're getting bailed out by the, the feds. So I, I think if, if they, if they vote a budget in November, we're going to have another special town meeting afterwards if they don't meet the commitment that they gave us.
Well, and I, and Gordon, you're right. The thing is that, at least on the governor's side, there, the asterisk was basically that asterisk, not so much to do with aid from the feds. It was basically, we don't know what's going to happen, but we're going to try. but we're going to try our hardest to um keep our promise, keep our commitments there. They could have said nothing. They could have said, folks, we're we don't see, we're not going to be optimistic. We're going to cut local aid, right? You know, and here's what we think it's going to be. Instead, they both, they said very specifically that they're going to level fund. And I don't see the governor doing that without having serious conversations with the speaker and with the Senate president and the chairs of the House and Senate Ways and Means Committee um before going public with that. I mean, because what he's putting his word on the line, he's putting everybody else's word on the line. This doesn't mean that it can't happen. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but either we go to town meeting with, based on that commitment, or we go to town meeting based on a reduction.
But I I agree with you. I'm just bringing it up. I think we move forward with the information that we have, but I just wanted to give everybody an update.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to 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 kind of catapult us into a a the nitty gritty of this. Obviously, the big picture issue, there's some big pieces still moving around. So I'm just trying to anticipate um some of where we might get um animated discussion, shall we say. So so that's fine.
Yeah, so moving from wage and personnel to Article three, this is a finance committee article. They've not made a recommendation yet. It's printed in the warrant one way, but I don't think they've made a final recommendation yet on the salaries set for the town officials. Um, and I would sue. Linda, it's Friday. You all are meeting next Friday?
Uh, yes, Friday at four, I believe, is when we're going to post for.
Well, I have a final recommendation from them then. Um, Article four is the budget. It's going to be to some extent, it will be done based on the finance committee's decisions on Friday. Um, I know there are going to be changes to it, so we'll have a new um proposal from the finance committee, new set of recommendations for town meeting. Um, and that's what, you know, that we'll start that as the normative um rather than the one that's printed in the warrant. Um, Article five is the revolving accounts. That's a normal article. There's no appropriation necessary. It's simply setting the list of revolving funds and the limits to which they can be spent. Six is the reserve fund. It's for repeat from previous years um for setting aside money for unassumed expenses, um both for the general fund and the water department. Articles seven through 12 are union or personnel contracts. Um, sorry, seven through 13. Um, I don't know that we're going to be able, we may need to pass over several of them. We'll see what happens in the next couple of days. I'm meeting with the selectman later today about some of this. Um, and we may, but the only one I'm definite about would be Article seven. Um, that should be 11,440, no, 10,440.
How do it was 10,440?
Yeah, 10,440 um would be the amount necessary for Article seven. We don't have amounts for the other ones yet. Um, 14 is the traditional article for the county co-op. 15 is the chapter 90, and I know that we can fill in the blank on Article 15, though we've been notified by the state that we no longer have to do this. I'm not going to do it one more time just to reduce the confusion, but we shouldn't have to see this article on warrants in the future. Um, 16 is a traditional article for me. It's the town roads. Then we get into a lot of the capital budget articles. Some of these are going to be passed over. And I'll be working with Sandy, the finance committee, to develop that list, get it to you, Dennis, and to Larry, so that we can put that consent agenda. But it's 150 for the backhoe and Article 16 for the highway. Um, sorry, 17 is the 150 for the backhoe. Um, Sandy, if there's things that we know we're passing over, if you want to say so?
Sure, we're passing over the backhoe.
Okay. Um, 18 is a copier for the Halifax Council on Aging. Um, 19 is the fire engine for the fire department. Are we passing that over?
No.
No, okay. 22, police vehicles for the police station for the police department. 21 um are for radio systems for the police department. 22 is for a motorcycle for the police department. Uh, 23 is for bulletproof, bullet resistant vests for the police department. 24, I I don't know that I'm going to have something to bring back to town meeting by Saturday, the 12th. The this is an error that the retirement system made with the housing authority. In essence, charging a town employee to them rather than us. Um, there's no question that there was an error made. There's a question is how much money the error was. And the county can't, in essence, do a refund. All it has suggested is that there'd be a transfer of money from the town to the housing authority. The housing authority is a separate legal entity, just like Silver Lake's a separate legal entity, from the town. I don't know that I'm going to have something that I can go to town meeting and say, look, here are the numbers, here's what happened, say yes, say no, and be able to back it up. I'm going to try as hard as I can to do that.
If you don't have a number, will you pass it over?
Yeah, I'm going to be asking to pass over. Even I it's the housing authority's article, it's not mine, but I certainly would recommend a pass over unless I can put a um presentation together to justify the amount. Uh, 25 assesses recertification account. That's a um every three years, they have to do the recertification. We put money aside every year towards that. Um, 26 is for a part-time school resource officer over at the Silver Lake Middle School. That it's a weird budget situation. Basically, Silver Lake is asking Plimpton and Halifax to put money in specifically outside of the normal assessments for this particular purpose. Um, last year, the town said no, Plimpton said yes. So the officer responded to the extent that Plimpton said yes. They've come back to both communities again and asked for money, and then it'll be up to the townspeople to make that decision. 27 is that truck inspection program I mentioned. I expect that the petitioner will ask that it be passed over. I'll confirm that during the week, in which case the board, you know, we can go on to the consent agenda.
Charlie, just to give from my curiosity, is is there a particular part of town that that's a concern for?
Walnut Street.
Where is it?
Walnut.
Okay.
Yeah, the problem is that walnut is being used by trucks going between the um town south of Halifax and then Bridgewater, back and forth. There are sand and gravel pits there, and they're getting plenty of truck traffic. We cannot move the trucks. A different route would require the permission of Bridgewater. They won't give it, so we're stuck with this route. There are a lot of trucks allegedly speeding, possibly being overweight and such. Um, it's a longstanding problem. This isn't something that just happened in the last six months. And the petition is trying to encourage the town. But the problem is, you know, let's say there are a number of challenges even with an inspection program. Let's put it that way. Um, 28 is an article um to grade all the unpaved roads in Halifax, including private roads, and we're allowed to do that. Um, I want to check, I mean, did Steve provide any estimate for this? It's not his article, it's a petitioner article.
We have $11,000 as an amount for it. I believe that came from Steve.
Okay, so the petitioner would move the article and we'll go from there. Um, 29 is cr- crosswalk control devices that crosswalks that don't have them. For instance, here in Hemlock Lane, across Plymouth Street, similarly Indian Path Road, and several other locations. I think Steve has provided the finance committee just this week with an updated amount. Um, and they'll
Right, 33,500. 33,500 is what he gave us for that.
Charlie, did we talk about the potential of uh the CARES Act money for that? Did we, we did start with that, right?
Yeah, I if we were doing touchless devices, I don't think Steve has gotten an estimate on that basis. Okay, you know, if it was Pat, we could look at that. I could talk to Steve about that and see if there, what the cost would be for touchless devices, what estimate it would be.
I have a, I'm planning a meeting with Tom O'Brien. We spoke briefly Monday. We're going to get together again, so some of these things I can bring up with, to him. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, for 30, Melinda, is the finance committee still recommending this?
That's the revision of the zoning.
Yeah, yes, the finance committee recommends.
The headland council worked with a group to revise a portion of the zoning bylaws during this past year. The idea is, and you know, you spend money doing that. Um, 31 and 32 are the problem childs that for Larry in that technically, we can't make donations. What we do is we contract with these agencies to provide service under 31 and 32, but they're traditional um articles that we see every year. But I understand Larry's concern about them, but they're usually approved every year. Um, 33 is for the stabilization. If we have any money left over, it'd be for the stabilization fund.
We're going to pass that over. We don't expect to have money left over.
Okay, 34, the chairs for the meeting room in Great Falls.
That's going to be passed over.
Um, 35 is for the um
Hey, Tom, do you want to hit mute for a minute?
Sure.
Thanks. Um, Tom, the 35 is for the um vapor barrier and insulation at the town barn. We are doing that one, right?
Yes.
Okay, but the doors, number 36, we're not doing.
No, we're passing over 36, the overhead doors.
Okay, 37 is the roof article for the for Pope's Tavern. Bids are due to um today. Um, we should be able to get bids in hand brought to town meetings, so we'll be able to put a number in. Um, the estimate for the architect was about 125,000. We don't have the bids in yet. We haven't opened them. We'll know later this afternoon what the actual bids that came in are. 38 is now an annual article. It's, we get a little bit of money for every Lyft and Uber trip here in Halifax. Um, that money that is accumulated and then it becomes this amount, that 29170.
It's actually increased, Charlie, because we got in more money, so it's 85760.
Okay, so we, but we're required by the state to appropriate the money and we, and we appropriate the money to the highway maintenance account. Um, 39, Steve has been working with Alan Diaz at the Board of Health. I believe they came up with an estimate somewhere between 10 and 15,000 dollars for the work.
I believe it was 12,000.
Okay. Um, 40 and 41, 42, we should be able to pass over. Either we are going to need the money or we're going to be um able to get the money from other sources. Um, 43 was a catchall article in case we needed to set aside money for COVID expenses, but now with the CARES Act and everything, um, we should be able to pass that over. 44 was the possibility of doing a pilot with the owner of the solar field. This is payment in lieu of taxes for the solar field on River Street. Tom, I don't think we're going to have a pilot by next Saturday, from the sounds of it.
No, that would be affirmative. Uh, I, we, everybody's been working on it, including Larry, but we just can't seem to come to an agreement with the developer.
Yeah, um, for 45, the selectmen are going to recommend passing that over. Um, the, while all the parties, the unions and the town have agreed that we want to get out of civil service, there's not, we haven't had a signed agreement yet. Until we do, we should pass that over. 46 is the next phase of the Storm Water Protection Act bylaw that we need to pass in order to fulfill our obligations to the federal EPA. Um, then we keep going to, it's a long one, sorry. 47, um, we're going to pass over 47 at the direction of FEMA. Um, what happened was that they wanted us to approve this, and then because of all the confusion with COVID and towns not being able to vote by certain dates, they said, we're going to redo this process, start over. We'll tell you when to do this, so we're going to pass over 47. Um, 48, I'm sure will be highly divisive. Um, this is the work that was done by members of the planning board, the ZBA, Board of Health, Board of Selectmen and others um to try and revise the sections concerned multifamily housing. I expect a lot of debate. It's going to be a zoning article, it's going to require two thirds. I don't know um what's going to happen with that. 49 is to allow more water facilities in the commercial zone land by special permit. Um, so there'll be some discussion, that'd be a two thirds vote. Uh, 50, we have the
Tom, could you mute again?
Yeah, I was just going to say I'm having a tough time hearing Charlie at the moment.
Yep. So Article 50 is beautification. They want to increase their membership, that requires a change in the bylaw. Um, 51 is a proposal from the selectmen that legislation be sent up to the state legislature to um determine that we can tax straightforwardly um solar fields. It's an idea of trying to force the legislature to do something statewide, but individual towns can do this. 52, that was going to be passed over. The idea was we were trying to balance a budget back several months ago. That was one way of doing it. And given that the state aid at least came in the way it did, we can pass over 52. And then 52 is the election article.
So the only um, the only thing on this for um for Dennis is Article 37, the new roof for Pope's Tavern. That could end up being a stable, a vote from stabilization. If it's a vote from stabilization, it has to be a two thirds vote.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick procedural question? Because we we asked this last year, and I just want to be clear on the answer. Um, once we complete the vote on Article four, um, if the finance committee takes a vote and wants to be able to leave um a return to Article four on the table during the course of town meeting, my understanding from last time was that we had to have one article go past after Article four, and then the finance committee would have to advise the moderator that they could intend at any point to revisit Article four. Whether or not they actually do, they have to provide notice after an article passes after Article four. Is that still correct?
Yeah, I, yeah, that's my understanding. And is it, Larry, that's a um a notice to reconsider, I think you actually say, isn't it? Rather than, I know what you mean by revisit.
Yeah, yeah, reconsideration um requires the passage of a, at least one successive vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Charlie, I don't, or Dennis, I don't see, or in my estimation, there are no, or I haven't heard of any, interrelated um articles that would necessarily um um not require. In other words, we take articles randomly at this point. I don't see any in here, and correct me if I'm wrong, that are so related that if we pick number 37, for instance, we have to go to 38 or 39. Do you see it any differently?
No, I don't see any interrelated articles.
Other than the fact that we're going to try to take whatever we're passing over and in some level of a con- consensus uh move at the beginning, correct? We're still, yeah, okay, yeah, no, I agree, and I didn't see any, or Larry, that's great.
And I'll run through it again for the quantum of vote, Dennis, and send that to you. Just I I'm sure there are a couple that are scattered around here that we just need to be sure on.
Now, that would be helpful. Thank you. Okay. Everybody's got their work cut out for them, it appears.
Yes, and I'll be in touch with everybody as we move along. If there are technical questions on logistics and then work on the articles as it moves forward.
Okay, great.
Is everybody all set for now?
That's helpful. Thank you.
Dennis, thanks for your patience, Larry also, and everybody else for trying to manage your technical difficulties here.
Um, well, well, thanks for all you folk, those public servants and workers doing the best for our town, because I I know they often don't see all of the work. And uh, for those of us who get the luxury of connecting with you guys, see all the work you're putting in. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, Tom, if
Yeah, if we're all set, we can adjourn this meeting.
You'll need, somebody make a motion second.
You need a motion?
The moved.
Second, all those in favor, roll call, Mr. Garen.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Smilius? Yes. Unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all. Have a great day.